...'s regular meeting, meeting number 2020-15. It's September 8th, 2020 at 7:30-ish PM, 7:33 PM in the Village Hall Auditorium. Jane, please take the roll.
President Berry?
Here.
Okay, Trustee Desmond would like to participate by phone.
Can I get a motion? Can I get a motion?
I'll read the roll first and then we'll...
Okay.
And Trustee Phelan would like to participate by phone. Trustee Vorder?
Here.
Trustee Mallow?
Here.
Trustee Stalker?
Here.
And Trustee Olenichek would like to participate by phone.
Okay, thank you.
Now we'll make the motion.
Can I get a motion, please, from the board to allow that participation by phone?
Motion approved.
Telephonically for the three trustees who are not able to attend. Thank you. Trustee Mallow made that motion, seconded by Trustee Stalker. Any discussion, gentlemen? Let's call that vote.
Trustee Vorder?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Trustee Stalker?
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0.
Thank you very much. Okay, would everyone rise for the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. Do we have any public comments?
I don't know.
Okay, well, she's checking that.
Did you check the book? Any names in there?
Is there a conflict of interest with any item on tonight's agenda?
Nothing.
Okay, I'm told we have no public comments?
Thank you.
And no conflict with any item on tonight's agenda? Okay, moving on. Item five is Presentation of Oaklawn Police Department Life Saving Awards. This was requested by Manager Palmer, and I'd like to call our Chief Dan Vittorio up, please. And Dan? Hello? Okay, Dan.
All right, thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. Board of Trustees, thank you for allowing me to present this award at the meeting. As Chief of Police, this was the first award that I had to sign, and it was a great honor and pleasure to do so. This is for actions that were taken on July 20th at Museum Drive at the Metro train station. Oaklawn units responded to the Metro parking tower at 5115 Museum Drive for a suicidal subject sitting on the ledge of the fifth floor. Upon arrival, Officer Scott O'Neil, Detective Chris Fontaine, and Detective Dan Wayora observed RN Natalia Patrick attempting to communicate with the female in mental distress who was barely holding on while sitting on the ledge on the southwest corner of the parking garage. Officer O'Neil and Detective Wayora joined RN Patrick in an attempt to talk to the female off the ledge. The female was not responsive to the advice and continued to make suicidal statements while inching further away from the ledge. Sergeant Joseph Schmidt arrived on scene and met with Officer O'Neil and Detective Fontaine and quickly devised a plan while Detective Wayora and RN Patrick continued speaking with and distracting the female. In a split-second decision, Sergeant Schmidt got down on his hands and knees while Detective Fontaine stepped on his back, reached over the ledge, and wrapped his right arm around the female's waist. Officer O'Neil then reached over and grabbed the female by the arms, and he and Detective Fontaine pulled the female to safety as all three fell to the ground without injury. The female was then walked to an awaiting ambulance and transported to a hospital for psychiatric treatment. Because of the compassion shown by all involved and the quick-thinking action with only seconds to spare, the female was prevented from jumping to her certain death and was provided the medical attention she so required. Detective Fontaine, Officer O'Neil, Sergeant Schmidt, Detective Wayora, and RN Natalia Patrick are all deserving of the Oaklawn Department Life Saving Award. And if you look behind on the table, if y'all would like to grab your award, and then we can all pose for a photo.
Great job, guys. Thank you, guys.
And any families who are in attendance, you do not have to stay for the whole board meeting. We're not mad if you want to go and have some refreshments. Congratulations, and thank you so much, guys. Thank you, Chief. Does anyone want to add anything to that presentation? No? Okay. You know, our Oaklawn police are a source of incredibly great pride, and all our first responders are in the community, and this just shows, you know, the unsung heroes they are.
You know, Mayor, I would like to say something.
Okay, Trustee Stalker.
I get more and more encouraged by the acts of kindness and bravery that occur in this village every day. I'm so pleased that we're able to recognize it in front of the whole village, and I thank the police department for their compassion and decency in doing the extra work, going the extra miles to save this young lady's wife. I just appreciate it. It makes me feel great to be an Oaklawn resident.
Thank you very much.
You can talk with your mask on.
Any other comments? Okay, we're going to call in our next agenda item. Let me pull that up here. We have a recognition of the food pantry volunteers who've supported families during our pandemic. And would representatives who may be out in the hall from the food pantries please come? Thank you, and you could line up over here, please? Sure. We don't have a podium, so it's a little awkward. Hi, how are you? And Commander Clark, can you come up here also? Commander Clark, I need you up here as well. Thank you. Okay, let's turn around and face the camera. You don't care about us. Well, we... That's not the way to say it. Okay. Everyone at home wants to see who you are. So we have a wonderful, wonderful community here. Our first responders are amazing, but, you know, we have these unsung heroes in all our churches, and I want to recognize some of the food pantry workers. We have had an incredibly challenging year for our families in Oaklawn. They have been thrown in situations many of them never imagined. We have, you know, people who are never jobless, people who are never homeless. We have a lot of people just struggling to put food on the table. And one of the beautiful things that happened in our community, the Greater Chicago Food Depository and our area churches teamed up and delivered over 34 tons of food through these pantries in several mass events, and they were drive-up events. They were incredible. So if you think of what that means, that 1,700 family of four were fed for two weeks from that. And I just really want to say what a difference it made. The folks standing up here represent different organizations and churches, and within those organizations, we have dozens of volunteers who showed up on Saturdays and made this happen. We have a regular food pantry program that's ongoing, but these were special pantries because of the COVID pandemic, and it was just incredible. Commander Clark, with our Emergency Operations Center, also worked tirelessly to make sure the logistics of this flowed, and I have to say, the military training really showed in the organization. He was timing our runtimes, how quick we could load up the cars. It was just a pleasure to watch, and if anyone ever has an opportunity to volunteer for one of these events, it will fill your soul up. So I'm going to come around and shake your hands, and, well, I guess I'll do elbow bump. And I don't know who's here today, so I'm going to read off all the certificates I have, and I'll come around. Do we have a microphone up there?
You can use mine, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Okay, can folks hear me? Okay, so I'm going to give these certificates, and then I'd like to give an opportunity for you folks to speak. Thank you. Can you open the first one? Thank you very much. Oaklawn Community Church. Is anyone here from Oaklawn Community Church? Okay. Oaklawn Community Church, Vicki Mitchell was our contact. Thank you, Vicki, and everyone. Pilgrim Faith Church, Lise. Are you Lise?
Yes.
I don't recognize you. I usually see Lise in work mode. Lise, Pilgrim Faith runs a pantry, and you've really taken on this challenge, and we are just so appreciative of your efforts. Thank you. And helping you also was Jackie Jekyll Cook as well. Okay, and then, thank you. And we have Amy, right? Amy, you're with the Greater Chicago Food Depository, and you are an Oaklawn resident also. And so this was a special thing to help your community. You spend your career helping others, other communities, so we're so happy you were active in Oaklawn. Thank you sincerely. And then, of course, St. Paul Lutheran Church, and this is Mr. and Mrs. Will. I just can't thank you enough. Our last few were over there, and it was perfect logistically. So I'm going to talk, pass it over to you first, and tell us about the Greater Chicago Food Depository.
My name is Amy, and I'm representing the Greater Chicago Food Depository today. We are glad that we could partner with you guys and get the food out to the community. We definitely saw a huge increase across Cook County due to COVID, and you guys stepped up with the call from Commander, and you, the pantries, all of you guys represented well and served the community. It was great. Thank you so much for reaching out and working with us.
Hi, I'm Lise Nickel. I'm from Pilgrim Faith, United Church of Christ, and I'm their pantry coordinator. We have our pantry Tuesdays and Saturdays, 10 to noon. I always throw that out there, but really, it was just an amazing opportunity to be able to work with the village, Commander Clark, Amy with the Greater Chicago Food Depository, of course, Oaklawn Community Church, and then Debbie and Mike from St. Paul Lutheran of Oaklawn. Really, it's been, we have seen a huge increase in who has come to our pantry, and like Mayor Berry alluded to, a wide variety of people, and people who had never been to food pantries before, and Oaklawn has really stepped up and just made it a really wonderful experience, and Oaklawn's generosity has really shown because we've been able to continue to provide, you know, food to people in need. And so, thank you very much.
Okay, and let's hear...
I guess I'm in charge here. Hello, I'm from St. Paul Lutheran Church, and we usually have a food pantry on the first and third Wednesday, but we took on this responsibility because Pilgrim Faith had a changeover in plans. So we said, yeah, sure, we will do it. And it has been such a rewarding experience. We have touched so many lives, and the important thing is, so many people are so thankful through this whole endeavor. We have to especially thank the Hilton in Oaklawn, though, because that's how we staged all the 500-plus cars that were going through, and we give there a special appreciation along with the community churches of Pilgrim Faith and Oaklawn Community. And you think that the pandemic breeds fear. We saw the opposite. There were 62 volunteers, all the way from older people that are in their 80s, all the way down to young adults, and all eager to help. So we thank Greater Food Depository for this great opportunity.
Okay, thank you. We're so happy you could be here. And what this was, the trucks would come and deliver pallets of food, and it would get organized by the volunteers, tons and tons of the food, and cars would drive up, and in about an hour, it would be cleaned out. It was unbelievable to see in action, and I just want to thank you. It was inspiring, so. One round of applause, please, one more for the folks. Commander Clark, anything you want to say? Okay, we couldn't have done it without you, and what a fantastic... You're right, it was a positive on a very tough pandemic. Thank you, thank you. We really appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. Very good. Next is a Constitution Week proclamation, and I just want the record to reflect, I am signing a proclamation declaring Constitution Week from September 17 through the 23rd in 2020, and this is requested by the Daughters of the American Revolution, who are very active in the community. And it is signed. Item eight, approval of the meeting minutes for the closed meeting minutes, 2020-06, dated July 14, 2020. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Mayor.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, was that Trustee Vorder?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second? Trustee Stalker is our second. Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, let's call the vote, please.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Phelan?
Yes.
Trustee Vorder?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Trustee Stalker?
Yes.
Trustee Olenichek?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very, very nice. Thank you. Then we have approval of the meeting minutes for the regular meeting minutes, 2020-14, dated August 11, 2020. May I have a motion, please, on number nine?
Motion to approve.
Trustee Vorder is our... I'm sorry, Trustee Stalker is our motion, seconded by Trustee Vorder. Any discussion, gentlemen? Let's call that vote, please.
Trustee Desmond?
Outstanding.
Trustee Phelan?
Yes.
Trustee Vorder?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Trustee Stalker?
Yes.
Trustee Olenichek?
Yes.
Motion passes 501.
Thank you. And because of the unusual circumstances where we have people participating by phone, I want to make sure everyone can hear. So Jane, when we go to new business by village trustees, can you swing your microphone over to this device to make sure it picks up? And then, the trustees participating by phone, if you could state your name before you comment as we go along, obviously, when we're talking about your districts, we know who you are, but in regular conversation, it'd be very helpful, because it is hard to hear. We have people with masks on and muffled voices, and it's hard. So anyway, we're going to do new business by village trustees. We're going to start in District Six with Trustee Phelan.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one item tonight. I think it's a good positive or hopefully a good...
And speak really loud, please, sir.
...flooded situation.
Can everyone hear him? We're having a little trouble hearing you, Tom. I'm going to adjust the microphone. If you could stand by, please.
Okay.
Okay, try now.
Okay, start from the beginning?
Yes, please.
Okay, just one item tonight. I wanted to update the board and anyone in the audience that's watching at home on our efforts to resolve the flooding issue that's affected Oaklawn for decades and decades. As everybody knows who's involved in Oaklawn, we've been trying for at least 15 years to work with the Archdiocese of Chicago on a solution regarding St. Chesmir Cemetery, where we could use the cemetery for water detention during storms, and we've really had no success there. We've made a little progress in the last 18 months, but none to speak of, and we committed as a board last year to make resolving the flooding issue, if not the number-one issue in 2020, certainly one of the top issues. And recently, over the last six months or so, the board collectively, the finance committee in particular, have been looking at the automotion property that we purchased last year. This is the property to the west of the Stony Creek development, behind the Home Goods and TJ Maxx store. And when talking to two or three developers over the last six months, the issue of elevation was a concern, even though that area really never has flooded, to my knowledge, and I've been keeping a record of properties that have flooded in Oaklawn for at least the last 13 years. That area, the particular parking lot, park lawn, empty tile, really has never been affected by flooding, but the elevation there makes developing that area difficult. So Alex Olenichek and I, during a meeting with a developer, were talking to him about an approach that might incorporate some retention or detention for stormwater, and then have the development limited to the frontage on 111th Street. And even though it's not optimal from a square footage standpoint, and some of the ideas we talked about were a hotel or active senior living center, the combined approach of detention and development certainly was appealing from the perspective of resolving or mitigating the flooding problem. And as people who know, in the area of South Oaklawn, which would be Bud's District, District Five, and my district, the Sixth, most of our flooding problems originate because Stony Creek overflows. And without going into the engineering and the flows and the turns and the twists, simply put, a lot of the water that collects in my district and Bud's district is because the water that runs to Cicero Avenue gets backed up. Our idea was to use the automotion property, to create a detention, and for those who know the area, that property, the back of it, the parking lot, butts the Stony Creek and the Wolf Wildlife. So we contacted the MWRD, and as luck would have it, the new director of MWRD, and when I say new, I think he's been there a year plus, so recently knew director named Frank Perkovich, he's an Oaklawn resident who coincidentally grew up at approximately 103rd and 52nd Avenue. So he was very aware of the situation. Another gentleman in MWRD also is an Oaklawn resident. They did commit to looking at it, had a person come out and look at the site, gave us preliminary positive feedback, and have committed to us that they are going to start looking at it. So again, very preliminary, it's all happened in the last two weeks, nothing set in stone or writing, but just want to let the board know that, you know, fingers crossed, perhaps, maybe for the first time, in many of our experiences here and probably in many of our lifetimes, we might have a regional-type solution that's beyond just the buying a house or two and digging out a four-foot retention area. So I just want to let the board know that that happened in the last week or so, and that, you know, as MWRD communicates with us, you know, we'll make sure that everybody keeps, is apprised of the situation. And that's all I have this evening.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor? Madam Mayor?
Can I let District Five speak?
I just wanted to... I'm not at the meeting. It's Trustee Olenichek. I will wait to speak.
Okay, thank you. Let's go on to...
This is about the topic on Trustee Phelan and MWRD.
I can't hear you. I'm sorry, trustee.
This is a follow-up on MWRD, on what Trustee Phelan was talking about.
Okay, thank you. We'll hear from you shortly, Alex. Let's go ahead, District Five.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, as long as Tom has brought this up, the property that's being talked about is a property all the way from about Central Avenue behind Richards High School, goes all the way to the automotion property and butts the shopping center on 111th and Cicero. That area has, is Wolf Wildlife. It's a, it can be a beautiful sanctuary, but right now, it's filled with mud. It's smaller than it should be. It holds less water than it should be. And any changes that'll occur on that body of water will be a great improvement for the area, in addition to being a great improvement for water retention. I strongly support that. It's in District Five. We can get it moving more quickly if the MWRD will participate, and I'm sure they're looking at it seriously. The other thing I wanted to mention is that today was really a feel-good meeting. I said something about the Life Saving Award for the police, but it's also very gratifying that the Chicago Food Depository partnered up with Oaklawn residents and churches to feed the people who needed it the most during this pandemic. This is really just a great deal. It's a sign of the kind of people that live and work in the village of Oaklawn, and I'm really proud of them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. District Four, Trustee Vorder?
Yes, Mayor. I'd just like to congratulate our Park District Director, Maddie Kelly. She's announced her retirement effective September 15. She has led our Park District for more than 25 years, and as a past commissioner of the Oaklawn Park District, and as a lifelong resident who grew up in our parks, I've always felt that our parks are the jewels of the village of Oaklawn, and under her leadership, she has not only remodeled just about every one of the parks, but she's leading us to an indoor swimming pool, hopefully her, that that follows her can pick that up and do it. So congratulations, Maddie. You've done a great job. You deserve your retirement. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. District Three, Trustee Mallow?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The only thing I wanted to mention tonight was in regards to our concerts on the green. We are currently still having those. We are also still running our Farmer's Market on our Wednesdays. Sunday, September 13 through October 11, we will host Sunday Concerts on the Green. In September, they will start at 6:30. In October, they will start at 6:00 PM. And then on Wednesdays, we will be having, currently having music at, starting September 16, and that will run through October 7. The Farmer's Market concert, or at least music, will run from 10:00 AM to noon, but the Farmer's Market does run a little earlier to a little bit later than the actual music.
Seven to one.
Seven to one. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
So that's really about it. The Oaklawn Arts and Events page on Facebook is always putting up who is playing at those Farmer's Market and concerts, so if you can go to that page, you can find out more info on the bands that are currently playing. The last thing I'd like to say is thank you to Trustee Phelan regarding that automotion property. It's an amazing opportunity to be able to solve some problems that that district and Bud's district have had. A little bit of mine butted up to Bud's has the same flooding issue, so it's good to hear that that's moving forward. Thank you, that's all I have.
Awesome. Okay, very good. And that leaves us to District Two, Trustee Olenichek. Hand me that thing. You want to hold it on?
This is Trustee Olenichek. I just wanted to touch on how big the automotion property is in the scope of flooding in the village of Oaklawn. Tom is being very humble in what he's telling you, because the news is very exciting. In talking to the people from MWRD, number one, they're so excited about the project that they are willing to invest money into the village of Oaklawn to greenlight this. Number two, the amount of acre feet, it's 300 to 400 acre feet of retention that will be developed there, if everything is successful. To give you an understanding of how much water that is, that's between 100 and 130 million gallons of water. Now, in the lifetime that I've lived in the village of Oaklawn, we've always had flooding, not just in the south side of Oaklawn, this happened throughout the village of Oaklawn. This project, under normal 100-year rain, when complete, and I'm very excited by the preliminary discussions that the trustees, Phelan and myself, have been able to have, is if greenlighting and move forward, within two years, this can have the biggest impact in the village of Oaklawn as far as water retention and mediation and reduction of flooding. So I just, I'm extremely excited. I know that in talking to Trustee Stalker and some of the plans, he looked out at also increasing the wetlands, and then talking to Trustee Phelan and myself about the possibility of adding more recreational space, perhaps a... a zip tie line going across, if this is all preliminary. But I do believe that in discussion with not just developers but MWRD, this is the best use of the auto-motion property. It will have a village-wide effect and be able to help us pretty much control, if not solve, the flooding under a normal 100-year flood. So I'm really, I'm really excited about that, and I just want to thank Tom for his stewardship and his leadership, putting together the meetings and being able to discuss this, because as this moves forward, I'm sure the other trustees will truly understand how big and monumental this is going to be in the Village of Oaklawn. Secondly, we had a meeting scheduled with ComEd past Monday. For whatever reason, ComEd was not able to meet with trustee Stalker, the mayor, myself. They have rescheduled it to this Wednesday. But I assure the residents of the Village of Oaklawn that the information that we're asking for from ComEd, and the information that we want to make sure that our residents, number one, are compensated for the amount of time and lost product that they had and lost groceries that they had. Number two, that ComEd is not doing the old, well, your electricity's working and everything's going to be okay. We want to make sure, as a village board, that ComEd is not just fixing what happened, but looking to avoid the same type of catastrophic power outage that we've had in the past. So I'm looking forward to meeting with ComEd to get the facts behind exactly what happened, why there was such a slow response, and what they're going to do in the future to ensure that that doesn't happen again. And then the final thing is, our Oaklawn Police Department, phenomenal job, again, and have been doing a tremendous job, along with our first responders. But I will tell you that our Police Department, in some very tough situations, has let their training and their leadership show through. So kudos. Keep up the good work. That concludes my report.
Thank you. District One.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no new business. Other than to reiterate what trustee Olenichuk said about the Police Department, the great work they did again. I know at the last protest, they were well-prepared. Thankfully, they didn't need to be. And congratulations to all those police officers and Natalie, the nurse who got the life-saving awards. Other than that, I have no new business.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm going to pass this back. Very good. Okay. Our village manager.
No report, Mayor.
Oh, wow. Okay. Consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are routine and are brought forward at the direction of the Board of Trustees and will be enacted with one motion. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. We have item 12A, a request to approve the Zoning and Planning Commission referral for a special use permit for an apartment in a C-2 district and a parking variation at 4809 West 103rd Street. This was a seven-zero vote to approve. Petition number 2020-14, Richard Karyati is the petitioner in District Six, and B is an ordinance granting that request. C is a request to approve the Zoning and Planning Commission referral recommending an impervious surface variation at 9829 South Normandy Avenue. This was a seven-zero vote to approve. Petition number 2020-15, Gustavo Cardenas is the petitioner in District One. D, like David, is an ordinance granting that request. E is a request to approve the planning and, excuse me, zoning and planning commission referral, recommending the approval of a harmonious fence material variation at 5064 Lamb Drive. This was a seven-zero vote to approve. Petition number 2020-16, Maureen Murphy is the petitioner in District Five. F is an ordinance granting that request. G is ordinance 20-15-44, an ordinance amending various sections of the Oaklawn Village Code, creating the position of Assistant Village Manager pursuant to the village's administrative reorganization plan. H is Resolution 201553, a resolution approving an agreement between the Village of Oaklawn and Bryant Town. I is Resolution 201554, resolution awarding H Linden &amp; Sons Sewer and Water Incorporated the contract to complete the Oak Center Drive Point Repair Project. J, Resolution 201555, a resolution awarding Triggy Construction Incorporated the contract to perform the 2020 Concrete Alley Program. K is Resolution 201556, a resolution awarding Lindhal Brothers Incorporated the contract to perform the 2020 Rebuild Illinois Bonds Program and Alley Phase Two Project. L is Resolution 201557, a resolution approving an agreement between the Village of Oaklawn and the International Union of Operating Engineers Local 150, representing the employees in the title of group chief. And that is item 12. May I have a motion on item 12, please?
Motion approved.
Thank you. Trustee Mallow made that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, trustee Stalker. Any discussion, gentlemen?
Madam Mayor, this is trustee Phelan. Can we move to item I?
Okay, item I. Any other discussion? Okay, so we're voting on everything except item I. Let's call that vote, please.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Phelan?
Yes.
Trustee Vorder?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Trustee Stalker?
Yes.
Trustee Olenichuk. Trustee Olenichuk?
He's not here. Okay, so trustee, let's see, 12I is Resolution 201554, resolution awarding H Linden &amp; Sons Sewer and Water Incorporated the contract to complete the Oak Center Drive Point Repair Project. May I have a motion on 12I?
Motion approved.
Thank you. Trustee Mallow made that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Stalker is our second. Any discussion?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to briefly talk about the site. And for anybody who looks at our agendas closely, as in the past, it's always a concern to me when we only have one bidder on a project that's, in this case, a quarter of a million dollars. It's especially curious in a pandemic where businesses are going bankrupt left and right. But I did inquire about this with our Public Works Director and Assistant Director. I guess there's a unique aspect of this project. It's somewhat of an emergency. It involves a lot of backyards, and I was told that there were more than, there were four or five that were interested. I believe that attended the pre-bid, but only one ended up bidding on it. So again, I think it's worth noting, in case anybody was curious, like I was, why we only got one bid for this.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion?
Mayor, I have trustee Olenichuk on the phone.
Okay. Trustee Olenichuk, any discussion on item 12I?
No.
Okay, hearing none? Okay, so what we're going to do is call the roll, please.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Phelan?
Yes.
Trustee Vorder?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Trustee Stalker?
Yes.
Trustee Olenichuk. Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Item 13, village clerks report.
A, Approval of Semi-Monthly Disbursements, number 2020-16D, dated August 25th, 2020, in the amount of $1,827,444.28.
Okay, may I have a motion on 13A, please?
Motion to approve, Mayor.
Trustee Vorder made the motion, seconded by-
Second.
Trustee Stalker, any discussion? Let's call that vote, please.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Phelan?
Yes.
Trustee Vorder?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Trustee Stalker?
Yes.
Trustee Olenichuk. Motion passes.
B is Approval of Semi-Monthly Disbursements, number 2020-17D, dated September 8th, 2020, in the amount of $11,979,591.10.
Okay, may I have a motion on 13B, please?
Motion approved, Mayor.
Trustee Vorder made the motion, seconded by-
Second.
-Stalker. Trustee Stalker, be just sorry, Tom. Any discussion? Let's call that vote, please.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Phelan?
Yes.
Trustee Vorder?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Trustee Stalker?
Yes.
Trustee Olenichuk. Passes, and a couple more things, Mayor. The Oaklawn Community High School has canceled their homecoming parade for September 30th, so we did pass that at this last board meeting, but that is canceled. And last but not least, early voting will begin in the Village Hall Auditorium on Monday, October 19th, and continue every day through November 2nd. Monday through Friday, the hours are 8:30 AM to 7:00 PM. Saturdays and Sundays, 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. So the county is giving us every opportunity to early vote, so please come out and vote. Thank you.
Thank you. And early voting is extremely popular, and it's not crowded. And, you know, with this election being so, so much interest in it, I'll say, please come out and vote early. Every vote counts. Every vote counts. Speaking of every vote counting, well, I'll go to my report now. I'm sorry. Item 14, Village President's Report. Please, if you haven't got your census documents done, please, 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 get them done. It's a simple form to fill out. You can go online and fill it out. If you know any adults, maybe, who are computer-challenged, or, you know, maybe someone who has trouble with these kind of things, please make sure they have filled it out. If we don't have every person who lives in Oaklawn counted, it is very costly. We lose federal money. We lose representation in Washington. And we just want every bit of tax revenue we can get coming back into our community, working for us that we can. So please, 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 get your census forms. My last item, this Friday is September 11th, and at 9:11 AM, we'll be broadcasting a 9/11 memorial, streaming it live through the Arts and Events page on Facebook. If, we're asking people not to come, but if you have time in your day, don't forget our first responders on this day, and to recognize not only their efforts, but to honor all those who have fallen in the line of duty, especially those during the tragic events of 9/11. So that, again, will be streamed live on Facebook through our Arts and Events page, and I will have a link to it on the Mayor Berry page, and we'll try to get one on the Village page. These things are very, you know, brief but meaningful, and, you know, they helps keep you grounded as to what really matters these days. With that, I just want to thank everyone who is here tonight, and congratulate again our first responders who received the awards. What an inspiration.
Mayor, are you going to mention the presentation today by President Preckwinkle?
So President Preckwinkle was here today, and what she was doing was recognizing Oaklawn for being first out of the gate, pretty much, with our application for CARES Act funding. And this was discussed at a prior meeting. Oaklawn received more than $680,000 in federal money to help with COVID expenses. And what this means for our community is that the money we need to keep all of us safe, all our first responders safe, to conduct village business and get everything done, all of that, all of those costs for COVID-related expenses are not coming out of the general fund, and that is a big, big deal when it comes to keeping jobs, saving, saving positions, all of that. We faced a massive restructuring due to the lost revenue and shortfalls we've received as a result of the pandemic. Not only did we incur more costs, but we have, you know, a shortfall of revenue, which is unprecedented. And Oaklawn is not unique in this. This is pretty much worldwide. But what we want to do is make sure when residents call for assistance, that they can get the same excellent services that our community is known for. And this has been the priority of this board, and I want to thank our manager, Palmer, for the tough decisions to maintain those services. So the CARES Act funding really helps us take some pressure off. It allows us to prepare more importantly for what may come next in the fall, if there's a second wave, if there's something else. It gives us a little cushion there, so that our first responders will always have the PPE they need, as well as our public works employees and our municipal employees. And this would not happen without the diligent efforts of our Finance Director, Brian Hannigan, and our Emergency Operations Commander, Art Clark. I want to make sure that they're recognized, as well as every employee in the Village of Oaklawn. We were keeping very detailed records from day one, and that allowed us to be kind of the poster child for how to do this thing. And it's a, it's a very positive thing residents should know about. And a lot of municipalities aren't even bothering to apply, and I think I heard a number, less than half of them who qualify, have submitted their application. And, you know, Oaklawn sure appreciates that $680,000. And if any community does not want to give their share to their community, we'll take it. Here in Oaklawn, we have an endless need, so maybe not endless, but a great need. Anything you want to add to that, Randy?
No, I just want to say that, I mean, we're so short, we got to have Brian Hannigan behind the camera tonight.
I know.
Brian.
We have our Finance Director operating our camera system, so, yeah, so he can't be in the camera. We should have you walk around and do a wave, because you should be recognized for your efforts. And with that, anything else anyone wants to say about the CARES Act? Okay, very positive for Oaklawn again, and residents can feel very good about what's been happening. So with that, I'd like a motion to adjourn.
Come on.
And that was trustee Stalker, I believe. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Trustee Vorder is our second. I heard a little insect in the corner of the room there. Was that trustee Olenichuk?
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, Alex. I just heard a dee-dee-dee-dee-dee. Trustee Mallow's. Anyway, let's call that vote, please.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great and safe couple of weeks. We'll see you soon.
I have a question.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are adjourned. Hi, can I help you?
Yes.
Jane, can you repeat that?
Sure. Begins in this room, October 19th, every day through November 2nd. Monday through Friday, 8:30 AM to 7:00 PM. And on the weekends, Saturday and Sunday, 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM.
Okay. How can we afford to handle that? Are we going to be standing in the stairs waiting?
Well, a representative from the county called me today, and they'll probably be able to put maybe six or seven machines in the room. They're going to come and space it out, because I already told them, they've got to follow all social distancing. And so as far as the stairs, I don't know how they're going to work that, but-
Yeah, the early voting is really the county controlling it. The village just allows them to use the space. So they will, they are duty-bound to make sure it's safe.
I have some worry about these stairs.
How you doing?
Because I am standing for a long time.
Yeah.